Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of May 27, 2025, in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1. These proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcasted by Area 58 TV. If we could all stand and pledge the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, the first media, the first agenda item tonight is a public hearing continued for Meadow Solar One LLC Care of New Leaf Energy requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 290-3-6.7, 290-4-3.4, 290-2-2.3, 290-5-3, 290-3-6.7, and 290-4-3.4 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 19C Ward Street in Carver, Mass. Assesses map 120 lot 6-1 in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. Excuse me. Hello.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Sarah Sterns with Beals &amp; Thomas, and with me representing the applicant is Dean Smith from New Leaf Energy. This is a continued hearing for Meadow Solar One off of Ward Street. We had a conversation about the project two weeks ago. It's a floating solar project on an existing cranberry operations. And Tom, maybe you can just scroll to the...
I was going to ask if you have this on the drawing?
You could just go to the overview plan, maybe, if you don't mind. So four floating arrays on existing agricultural reservoirs. Since our last meeting, we received a comment letter from Andy Glines of Fussin' O'Neil and responded to him on some items that he had talked about at our last meeting. We did receive this morning a note from Mr. Glines noting that we had, the applicant had addressed his comments or satisfied his comments. I just wanted to read it. The applicant has addressed our comments and our input on conditions and waivers from the last memo are still applicable. So I'll stop there, not to be duplicative of what we talked about last time, but happy to answer any questions the board may still have.
What should...
Thank you.
Sorry, if it's all right.
Oh, no, I just said, "Thank you."
What's your timeline for removal of non-functioning panels in the Waddles, in the Wetlands?
They usually have, oh, sorry, Dean Smith, newly, for the record, they usually have a response time of within a few hours for things like that. It depends on how critical it is to the system, but they use local labor for operation and maintenance. It will depend partly on who the owner contracts with once the system is in operation, but it would typically be within a few hours.
And that's just for any non-functional panel that's...
They, they want to get the system operating at full capacity as soon as possible, so anything that would affect production would be addressed quickly.
Okay. My, my concerns is that breakage, leakage, and various other issues involved in the floating, so that's all. So I don't know what an appropriate timeline to remove broken or misused panels would be, but I think a couple hours is really asking a lot of the applicant, so.
Good. Does anyone else have any comment on that?
Pretty clear.
I'm all right with that. Couple of hours is more than enough. I mean, I would imagine you'd have somebody out there within, within a week's time.
It depends on what exactly what the situation is.
Right.
Yeah, how critical it is to operation. I mean, the damage to modules is usually not severe, so that, that there would be anything exposed. These, the modules that are specified are solid modules, so there's solid metals, there's glass. There's, there's not a lot that can happen when one is, you know, when the glass is cracked. But they have various response times depending on what the situation is. Like I said, they generally use local labor, so somebody is in the vicinity that can be there quickly when necessary.
How often are they monitored?
The production is monitored continuously remotely, so there's equipment in the equipment area that, that's keeping track of the production of energy. And so when we were Borrego, we had an operations and maintenance office in Lowell, and they had, you know, multiple screens where they were monitoring various systems. And during the daylight hours when it's producing energy, that would be continuous.
Thank you. Very good. Any other concerns or questions from the board?
No, I think, I think we should spell out when broken panels should be replaced as a matter of a timeline because it's a floating array and has a more direct access to the water source in Aquifer.
Yeah.
I, I think two weeks is appropriate in regards to that.
Okay. Mr. Planner, could we make that a condition?
Can.
Very good.
Two weeks to replace any non-functioning panels.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? No. Whereas this is a public hearing, it doesn't appear that we have anyone from the public here, but if there is, please come forward. With that being said, could we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. If the board doesn't have any other questions, can we get a motion to approve subject to those conditions?
Do we vote?
We have to vote.
We need to vote to close the hearing.
To close the public hearing, I'm sorry. Mr. Lake?
Aye.
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 Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
All right, so we've closed the public hearing.
Public hearing is closed, and now I'm asking for...
Yeah, so at this point, I think, as we pointed out, and I apologize for, for not having a draft decision prepared for you, but I think we answered the conditions, we've answered, the applicant has answered the concerns. We've heard back from the fire chief, the fire department, that access is fine to the property. So while typically we'd like to have a draft decision, I don't have one, but if the board is comfortable voting to approve with conditions outlined by Fussin' O'Neil, I will draft that decision as we did last time.
In addition to the conditions that Mr. Shea has brought up?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll draft that decision, send copies out to everybody so they can take a look at it, and we'll get it signed.
Very good.
But as I said, I think that it's taken a while to get to this point, and the questions have been answered. As you see, it's a very busy site, there's a lot going on there. If there was ever to be an orphaned site for solar, I don't think this would be it, because there's, there's a lot of stuff out there.
Right.
And all, you know, so with that, the board's, the board's, the board's decision what they'd like to do.
Very good. Can I ask for a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Meadow Solar One LLC Care of New Leaf Energy.
And I will second that.
Curtis Lake says aye.
Well, it's open for discussion. All right, because it looks like we'll be giving a variance for the required roadway, but we're doing that on the basis of the fire department's recommendation, which we have in hand.
Yes.
We're getting the name and informational contract, fire department sign off on emergency. So all of Mr. Glines' conditions will be included in it?
Uh, everyone.
Okay. And we still have to deal with the lot line. Now, the lot line's going to be moved in order to make this project viable, because otherwise it doesn't provide the required separation.
That's correct.
The applicant has mentioned that they are going to move the lot line, and that's going to be a condition of approval.
That is in there as a condition, correct?
It is, yes.
Yeah.
And, and as we talked about before, removing a lot line is an AD1X plan.
Correct.
It's essentially what we see for ANRs, but it doesn't require the board's signature on something like that, it can be filed directly with the registry.
Right.
Oftentimes applicants bring things into the board to memorialize that and to preserve any sort of grandfathering that might come with it. There's no grandfathering in place at this point, but moving that lot line, there are two options, the applicant filing an AD1X plan, or coming in with an ANR plan.
Right.
On either occasion, I believe the, the recommendation is prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Very good.
I just want to ensure that as long as the panels are operational, that the lot line isn't moved in the future, because then it will make the project out of line with what we're approving, so I just want to make a note of that to the applicant.
I believe if they did do that, then they would have to come in front of the board.
Well, I, I, they, they can't get a building permit until they erase the lot line.
Until they erase it, yeah.
So they won't be operating until they get a building permit, and they don't get a building permit until they erase the lot line.
I just want to make sure that five years down the road, that the line's not going to be changed, and as long as those panels that they are in operating, that the line remains as part of the approved project.
You mean the line that they're removing?
Yes, because currently with the lot line there, it doesn't meet the standards, and so they're going to move the lot line, and I don't want it...
Wanted to...
Five years down the road, or to, as long as the solar panel's on there, it should be conditional that the lot line remain in, in accordance with the bylaws.
I don't think that they would be able to do that unless they came back to the board. If they were moving it, they can remove it.
They, they could just move a lot line, right?
Yeah, if I may. So our, our building commissioner is very communicative, we talk all the time. So when he gets a request for a building permit, he's got the file, he looks at these things. We talk about those things to make sure those conditions have been met.
Right.
So I'm fairly confident in our building commissioner that he's not...
Oh, no, I understand that.
I, I think Mr. Shea's concern is five years down the road if they revert something.
Well, you, you can erase a lot line without coming to the planning board, but you can't put a lot line in without coming to the planning board.
Correct, yeah. No, you have to come back.
It would be an ANR plan at that point.
Right.
To come back.
Exactly, yeah. Very good. So, do you have any other concerns?
Nope, no, I don't.
Okay.
We should do this alphabetical because it's a special permit.
That is correct, yes. Mr. Lake?
Aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen St. Delo...
Mr. Shea says aye.
Sorry.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
All right, that's 5:00. All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have another public hearing continued for Renewable Energy Development Partners LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 290-2-2.3c, Article 3-1, 290-4-3.4a, and Article 5-3 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 96 Purchase Street, 0 Leeway, 0 Rear Fosdick Road in Carver, Mass. Assesses map 57, map 58, lot 2-a, lot 2-0 in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. The proposed project includes a dual-use ground mounted solar photovoltaic system on existing agricultural cranberry bogs as part of an agricultural solar tariff generation unit.
Good evening, again, Sarah Sterns with Beals &amp; Thomas, and representing the applicant, Renewable Energy Development Partners is Hank Bemett and Tom Mollahan. Again, a continued hearing from two weeks ago, largely, thank you, Tom, largely addressed the majority of comments. Did receive a satisfactory email from Andy Glines of Fussin' O'Neil today on this project as well, as well as Carver Fire. We did submit a response to Mr. Glines' comments and the board's comments specifically related to screening that was discussed at the last meeting, and Tom has the revised plan up.
I think that's not the revised plan, because I, I brought up the one that was on the website, so.
Oh, yeah, okay. I think Michelle went in the hallway, said that you had the, the new one.
Well, as, as Eric will tell you, Michelle's very trustworthy. We had a concern about who was on the agenda for today. So let me get the updated plans.
Okay. Do you maybe want to just describe the changes?
Sure.
Does it look like them?
No.
No.
All right, so close. All right.
So we had a discussion last time about screening, essentially, and Mr. Shea brought up some concerns about whether we were adequately screened from all of the abutting properties. So we went back and took a look at it and realized that we had, we had landscape easements where we forgot that we had landscape easements or should have pointed them out. So along the rear of Fosdick Road, I mean, along the rear lot lines of the lots that are on Fosdick Road, we have a landscape easement, which we've, you know, secured from the landowner, which will allow us for the landscaping to stay there over the life of the project. But we did, in addition, to alleviate some concerns about whether that landscaping on the applicant's property was sufficient, was proposed a planting plan along the rear of those lots. There's, I was out there today, I took some pictures, and I looked, there's, there's at least 30 feet or so of vegetation that's on the applicant's property. It's really thick wooded area, you can't really see any of the houses from the lot. But in the event that the landowner, just, again, just as a belt and suspenders, were willing to commit to planting along that easement, the only thing we would request is to do that planting at the request of any of the abutters if they come in during construction, because we've, we've actually had, we had a project here in Carver where required us to put in some fencing and plantings, and the neighbors actually didn't want them. They didn't show up to any of the meetings. So we're happy to plant there, but just don't want to do anything and have a neighbor come out and say, "Why are you putting planting trees there? I like looking out my backyard over the bogs." So we're happy to have it as a condition that upon the request of the co-enforcement officer or the planner at any point prior to completion of the project, we're happy to institute those plantings. So that was one change. The other changes were, there were, there's a lot right next to the owner's maintenance shed at 90, was it 94 Purchase Street, I think? And so we were, I want to go to the, can you go to the easement plan, Tom? Well, while you're here, we'd love to stay there. So where you have your arrow on the lower right of that is the proposed planting plan along the rear of the, you can see that it's heavily wooded currently, so what we've just proposed is supplemental plantings in case there's a concern. So that's the issue that we just talked about. Tom, did you get the easement plan?
The easement plan was actually submitted in our first...
Yeah, that's actually in the first.
Well, that's good news, is it? I found that one, like...
All right. I don't know where it is, I think it's up front.
It's in the front.
Oh, that's it right there. So the lot right next to the entrance driveway there, that long rectangular lot.
I'd be, I'd be happy to let you drive.
Right, this lot here, we were unable to meet the, about the 200-foot setback, but we can't meet the 100 feet of plantings within the 200-foot setback. We just don't have the room, and the landowner's done some clearing there, so we, we received an affidavit from the abutter waiving the screening requirement there. Similarly, so we have, we have an easement all along Purchase Street. This lot here, we also requested an affidavit from the landlord because it's, there's topography changes from her lot to his lot, so it would be difficult to do plantings there, so she was final with the, she doesn't require the screening anyways. So I think with the two affidavits and the planting plan along Fosdick, we have fully complied with the screening requirements and bylaws. That's far enough.
Well, I just want to make clear, how far is the array from, it looks like number 30 Fosdick Road, like...
I think it's on that plan, sir, it's like 900 feet or so?
700 and some odd feet, okay.
Yeah.
You, you are still required to do 100% vegetative buffer bordering all residential areas. We are allowed to do alternate screening for over 600 feet. It's recommended stockade fence and single row of vegetation close to the project.
Sure, just keep it back.
And that is the fourth point. And you're required 100% screening of the project from, in residential agricultural zone, from adjacent properties, within three years of the start of construction. So you're not going to meet the required 100 foot, so I, I don't see that it's an issue, but I don't think the, any abutters that have an issue should be going to the applicant. It should come to the, the planning department with any issues to deal with. But are we going to propose screening, like a screen of some sort along the areas where they can't meet it, or are we just going to waive, waive it? At the, for the properties that are waived, we can reduce it down to 25-foot vegetative screening, but there's still a requirement for screening, so how, how are we going to do this?
But what, are you referring to the ones that he has the affidavits on, or just in general?
Well, there was an affidavit for two properties, but, I mean, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, you know, there's, there's maybe a dozen other properties that are going to have, or more, that might have...
So, if, can I interject for a second?
Please.
So I know some, you typically pick up your packet early, Connie, to get prepared for the meeting, and I don't know that, likely it's in your packet tonight, because Michelle is very good about backfilling things after people pick up their books. But from Andy Glines, Monday, or Tuesday, 27th, 10:31, "Good morning, Tom and Sarah. FNO has reviewed the information provided on 5/21. The applicant has previously addressed our comments, and our input on conditions and waivers list are still applicable. We continue to defer to the planning board regarding the adequacy of proposed plant materials and screening. However, is our opinion that the revised landscape plans meet the intent that was discussed at the last planning board's meeting?" So I don't know if you've seen that yet, but I just want to make sure that I put it in there on the record.
I, I did see it, but again, where are we? Are we, are we still going to require, because I can see along Fosdick Road, it looks like there's more than ample space to require 25-foot vegetative screening in that area. It looks like the screening further down on Fosdick Road, well, that's going to be 10, 20 foot wide, and then what's the proposal out in the street there? What's the width on, off of Purchase Street with the northeast corner?
By the driveway entrance?
Yes.
I don't know that has a, it doesn't have a, it's oddly shaped, so I think it's 20 feet, just looking at the scale, 20 or 25 feet thick along the right of way.
I'd be all right if, if there was a 25-foot buffer, because it's over the 600 feet in many cases, be provided and maintained over the course of the life of the project.
Mr. Planner, is that something we can incorporate?
Pardon me, I was making a note about something else. Very sorry about that. Would you repeat the question?
Connie, if you would mind. Mr. Shea, if you would, if you could just tell it again, I'm sorry.
Oh, that, that a 25-foot landscape buffer be maintained for the life of the project, which it looks like they do have the room to do it, so any landscape buffer should be 25 feet. It looks like they have a 10-foot easement, but there's, there's clearly room to, to bump that out to a 25-foot vegetative screening, because nowhere does it allow us to eliminate screening, but we are allowed to provide alternate screenings, and as it's over 600 feet, I think that would be a reasonable meeting place.
Question, I realize that this is our responsibility as the board, but all the abutters have been notified, correct?
Correct, twice.
Yeah, so if we don't have anyone coming forward...
Well, that's a fallacious argument, I think, that the people expect us to do the job and support the bylaws that, that they've approved through town meeting and have been approved through the Attorney General, so...
No, I understand that, but the fact is that, to his comment that he made earlier about another project that he's been on, where the people don't want it, and I have had that happen to me personally, where people have cut down trees on my property because they want to view my cranberry bog. So it's amazing, you know, how you get some that want it and some that don't, but I would hope that if someone was opposing the project and had concerns about it, not to say that we shouldn't be requiring the buffer, that, that they would come out and oppose it or express some concern over it.
Right, alternatively, I would note that only, only two properties provided the waiver, so that would, two out of all those properties provided the waiver, so...
If they obtained waivers, would that address your concern?
Well, then we could bring, bring it down to 25 feet or provide alternative screening, which, you know, are they going to fence in this property and put a row of trees around the solar, I think that's asking too much, I think it should...
I would agree on that, because...
I would, I can see that there's already a 10-foot landscape easement along the properties running on Fosdick Road, and there's 100 foot for most of Purchase Street, so I, I think a 25-foot screening is, is easily done there by just, and looking at this, this map here, if, if you want to bring it up on the screen.
[inaudible].
So we all should have it anyways, there's 10 feet, and it's clear that it could be much, much wider in places. Is the other, is the colored one with the green line for the landscaping easements?
This one here? This is the revised, this is the revised L2. Oh, you're looking here, do, do, do.
Right, and even on this, you can see that, that the room is there, where, but L1 shows a little better that there's, there's more than sufficient room on the applicant's property to provide a 25-foot screening.
Madam Chair, can I respond to a company?
Please do.
So I'm not clear what Mr. Shea's referring to, as the 25-foot minimum setback. With regard to screening and waivers, at least, the language of the bylaw says, "Direct abutters to large-scale ground must have the option of reducing the setbacks to a minimum of 50 feet along the common border by providing a signed affidavit that waives standard setback and screening requirements." So the setbacks and the screening are two different things by our interpretation. So we've... So we've, we don't need relief from the setback, because we're in excess of the setback requirement in all cases.
Correct.
And, and in response, I will say that bylaw 293, 6.3E, states that vegetative screening shall be provided for a minimum of 50% of the specified setback, so even if we reduce it to 50 feet, there's still that 25-foot requirement.
But we're not asking you to reduce the setback, the setback is not a, we don't have a, we're not, we don't have an affidavit to reduce the setback, we have an affidavit to, to remove the screening requirement, as, as your bylaw says, that you can waive the screening requirements.
You can, right, but the, the bylaw still clearly states that you can waive it down to 50 feet, or we can waive it down to 50 feet based on the affidavit, but vegetative screening is still required for a minimum of 50% of the setback. Now, we're talking, most of these properties are 600 feet away, and we can provide alternative screening to the 100-foot requirement of, of vegetative screening in regards to this. In here, it mentions, you can put alternative screening such as a stockade fence and single row of vegetation in close proximity of the project, but I'm looking at the project here, and I can see that could be a difficult prospect for you. So my alternative, that is a 25-foot screening easement along all the properties on Fosdick Because right now, you have a 10-foot wide landscape easement that's showing up on, on chart L1, that, that runs the length of Fosdick Road on your property. You're looking to add, what, maybe eight feet down by 13 Fosdick Road area there, and I can understand that the owner of the properties can do what he wants with his property in regards to screening and setbacks, but the other properties don't have that option, and the room is there to do it. I can see it says 10 feet, and easily there's probably 40 or 50 feet available of existing vegetation in that area.
Mr. Plater?
If I may.
Yes.
That line there is the 10-foot landscape easement line, and you can clearly see that there's, there's sufficient room, and I believe that's the property owner there, where they?
Property owner where the hand is, yes.
Yes, so, I mean, he can do what he wants with his property, he owns, he owns all of it, and, but that 10-foot landscape easement up, up there is, is easily 40 or 50 feet wide. I'm just asking that we set it to the, the minimum of 25 feet.
Mr. Plater?
Yeah, I'm going to just read the last line of Andy's email this morning again. "However, it's our opinion that the revised landscape plans meets the intent that was discussed at the last planning board meeting."
Thank you.
So, I think the vast majority of folks think that the landscaping is adequate. This is a special permit, it requires a four-fifths vote, and if four-fifths of the planning board members believe that there needs to be more screening, then there needs to be more screening. If that's not the intent, then, then it's not necessary. I'm a guy who loves trees, I plant trees all the time, not all the time, but I planted more, more of my share of trees, but the fact that it's a heavily vegetated site, there's a screening there, there's additional screening proposed, our consulting engineer looked at it and says, "Yeah, I believe this meets the requirement of the landscaping." I, I don't know that, what else the applicant should be doing at this point. They provided a plan, they provided revised plans, our consulting engineer looked at it and said, "Yeah, that looks great." So, it's in the board's hands.
So what are we requiring for screening, then?
Well, Mr. Glynn says it meets the requirements.
Yeah, but, is it, what are, what is, what is, what are we requiring for screening? That's, that's my question to the board, I, I want to understand this as much as anybody else. Are we not requiring the screening? Are requiring the screening only in two areas, or is, is, are we making sure that screening is left to the other properties on Fosdick Road? I mean, what, what is, all I see here is two proposed screenings on the Area C and, and the northeast as being the proposed screening for the project. I want to know what is going to be there on a permanent for the life of the, the project? That's, I just want clarification.
Yeah, just, so that, just in a way of clarification, so the only thing we've changed since the original application, where we had, we had definitive screening proposed up on Purchase Street by the entrance, which is Area A, I believe. We've also had permanent screening proposed down along Fosdick Road by the bog, where there's no, there's no lots there, but you can, you can see through the existing trees when you're driving along, so that is proposed definitive screening. And what we've added since the last hearing is conditional screening, where Sarah's putting her hand on the rear of Fosdick Road, in the event that the abutters request it, through the planning board, obviously, not, not through us.
Right.
And with respect to the 10-foot versus 25-foot, I mean, I, I don't disagree that there appears to be land there, but I don't have an easement for 25 feet, I have an easement for 10 feet. And 10 feet is adequate to put a row, a single row of vegetation in, which is what the bylaw says. And there's an existing, you know, 30-plus feet of vegetation on the applicant's property and another 30-plus on the homeowner's property, so there's existing robust vegetation there, so I think the planting plan is not necessary, but we're prepared to do it if the abutters so request. So that's two definitive planting areas and one conditional planting area on the request of the abutters, is what we're proposing.
Very good, thank you.
So, so what I'm hearing is that we're not going to require any screening, as is required in the bylaws, for those properties, that it's conditional whether somebody asks for it or not?
Well, we could make it a condition, because Mr. Glynn has approved their changes to the plan that we asked last week, two weeks ago, and then we could also make it a condition that if someone comes forward, then they, they must implement additional screening.
Madam Chair, I'd also point.
Could you introduce yourself?
Sarah Sterns, Fields and Thomas, just in that same section that we're talking about, in the bylaw, under dimension and density requirements, under setbacks, it also does note, "Abutting properties shall be visually, visually screened from installation through either existing vegetation or new plantings of not less than eight feet." So we have kind of a combination situation in this specific area, which is the intent of the proposed, I guess, conditional screening, as we're calling it. That's really where that came from. There's significant vegetative buffer in this, in this area, both, as Hank said, on the applicant's property and on the abutting residences' property today. So, with that, along with that easement and proposed planting, should it be needed, we felt that that was an appropriate presentation to the board. It looks a little bit silly on the plan to show trees planting, planted where there's an existing vegetated buffer, but that's the intent behind it.
Right.
And really, just looking back at that sentence in the bylaw to help support that, where it does note, take note of existing vegetation, was, you know, part of that thinking, coming back to the board with the revised plan.
Right, I'm not requesting plantings, I'm requesting that the existing vegetation remain in place on that, on the property there, along those properties, along Fosdick Road. It's, screening has to be provided, we are allowed to provide alternate screening and vegeta, currently existing vegetative screening is fine with me, but I think that the law is pretty clear that vegetative screening is required, and we're allowed to make some adjustments based on the distance of 600 feet, so I, and I just, 25-foot is the minimum, and it's required in all conditions, and I think it's fair that the exist, I'm not asking for new plantings, I'm asking for that existing vegetation to remain.
To invade.
Because it's not, it's not the neighbor's responsibility to provide screening for the, for their project. It's already in existence, it's marked out on the map, people shouldn't have to come back and fight for something that they expect is, is their right, and that we are here to uphold, so that's just my thoughts on the subject.
Please.
Madam Chair, so we agree that, again, how Hank went with our EDP, we agree that the existing, I mean, the existing vegetation should remain, which is why we secured an easement from the landowner, that's in our, it's an easement for our benefit.
Right, right.
So, in the, in the event that he would like to clear that area, he's prohibited from doing so because we control the easement.
Understood.
Correct, but he cleared right up to it, unless the board defines it, and currently we're discussing possibilities and no requirement for it to maintain, be maintained and to be there. They're requesting it to be conditional on the request of the abutters, and I, I believe that the abutters have already made their statement by either signing or not signing a waiver to bring the.
But he just said that they can't, right? Did he just say that they can't?
Well, that's what the easement is for.
Right.
Right, the 10-foot, 10-foot wide easement.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm asking for it to be 25-foot.
May I, may I suggest a, an additional condition for this permit, that a final sidewalk to ensure adequate screening be in place prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and operation?
That sounds very fair, thank you.
That way, after everything's built, we go out and we take a look and go, yeah, we need some trees.
Are we going to walk through people's backyards?
We're going to walk through the development. This is, you know, this is, I don't, anyhow, I, rather than have continuing discussions about hypotheticals that may or may not happen.
Understood.
I think it's better to just say, here's the requirement, they met the bylaw, our consulting engineer said they met the bylaw, impose a condition that says the final sidewalk to ensure adequate screening from abutters is required prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. That way, when everything's built, you go out and take a look, and you go, yeah, we're going to need some stuff over here.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So I, I agree with the spirit of that, the challenge is, we've been through it before, unfortunately, a lot of things can change between now and construction, and it, it sounds very open and adequate screening. We need to provide certainty to financiers and things like that, so I'm happy with a condition to that effect, but that says, you know, provided that the screening solution is what we've proposed. In other words.
As identified in.
Confirm that what we've shown you, that told you that we're going to do is what we did, I'm happy to live with that, but to live with this is adequate.
Okay. Final sidewalk to ensure that optional screening.
Has been installed, as requested.
Final optional screening.
So what screening is going to be required along the properties along Fosdick Road? That's, that's the bottom line of my question. What are we conditioning for required screening on that? I mean, it already states here that it cannot, it has to be 100% obscured from all, in the residential agricultural district, from all adjacent properties, so are we just going to wait till somebody complains, or somebody has to take this to court, or somebody is an abutter, or maybe somebody new moves in and doesn't like it? So, how do we deal with that? It shouldn't be conditional if somebody complains, or if this, or if that. The bylaw spells it out, it is as a minimum of 25 feet, and I think we're being pretty generous with much of the rest of the property, and it looks like the 10-foot landscape easement is an easement for the project developers on the abutters' land, and has no, it's not the abutters' land, is what I'm understanding from this conversation, so it, it shouldn't be very difficult to double that, that line to 25 feet. I, I just don't see how we're protecting the people of this town by waiving off all screening requirements unless somebody complains about it. It, it has to be established where it's going to be, how much is going to be there. And if we're going to do it on a conditional basis, that somebody comes forward and complains, we, we, there should be some sort of structure set up so that they're not jumping through hoops to do this. Those are my concerns.
Yeah, just one last thing about this, we have a, a planting plan before us that shows 38, 21, 20, and 18, so I'm going to go round those up and say there's 128-foot tall plants that have proposed for this. So, does someone say, there's no screening, is sort of a, well, I don't understand how someone could say, there's no screening, if we have a plan in front of us, and it's on the screen in front of us, and it says, here's the screening, and there's optional screening that is shown. So I go back to, there is screening, our consulting engineer has said it appears to be adequate, and we've got a, a, a condition I've talked about, and I'm going to read it one more time, "Final site plan to ensure optional screening as shown on approved plans needs to be installed."
If the condition is to reiterate that bylaw that, that these, this has to be 100% screened from the neighbors, then I, I think that would, that would be sufficient, but again, what is going on with the rest of the screening along Fosdick Road? Is it, is it going to be there? Is it not going to be there? Is it conditional on whether somebody complains about it? You know, this is the time to decide on, on where we're going with this.
I understand your concerns, but I, I think I'm also a little perplexed as to why Mr. Glynn would support this, if he didn't feel that it was necessary or adequate to meet the requirements.
He's not here, ask.
But he put it in writing, correct?
Yeah, are there any other, I mean.
Why does he feel that this, in what way, shape, or form is this as an alternate form of screening? Is he understanding that, that we're proposing conditional screening, or is he believing that?
I don't think he feels it's necessary to impose additional screening based on what he.
I'm not asking for additional screening, I'm asking.
No, additional screening based on what he put in his letter, he felt that what they've proposed is adequate.
Is, is adequate for, for what? For who? I'm just asking, they can come down and cut down all the trees on their property if they want, all along the back of Fosdick Road, and then where does that leave the people? If we're not requiring the screening of some sort be put in there?
Yeah, in the Supreme Court of Hattie Check, and I don't know who Hattie Check was against somewhere in New York, when you moved to the hazard, you essentially said, well, I moved here, I know that I live next to a pickleball court, I know I live next to a school, I know I live next to a, a solar array, it's going to be behind some screening, and if I opt to cut down all the trees in my backyard, then I've opted to do that because I've bought this piece of property. These, once again, are some sort of far-ranging hypotheticals that really don't have a parameter in this instance. We've got screening, we've got additional screening, we've got a consulting engineer who said, that's fine.
Where's the screening?
I don't know how much longer you want to talk about this.
I just want to know where.
But, I'm just saying that I think we've covered this.
I just want, and the question is still out there, define the screening, where's the screening going to be? I see two plantings for screening, and then I'm told the rest is conditional, so just tell me where the screening is going to be, what screening is going to be there in there for the life of the property? That's, that's, it's a very simple question to ask, it's part of our bylaws, where is the screening going to be? Are you proposing to leave all the vegetative screening along these houses behind Fosdick Road? If that's the case, I'm all right with that, there, there appears to be plenty. I'm not asking for anything other than to know where the screening is going to be for these properties.
It is currently there.
It's not, they just said it was conditional if somebody asks for it.
This, this existing screening is there, obviously, and it, and the intent is for it to remain there for the life of the project. What we have proposed is more supplemental screening.
Right.
In the case the abutters requested, and we've provided an easement to be able to do that, on our, on our property, not on their property.
So, so this is the first time that that's been mentioned, so that you're going to leave the screen, the vegetative screening alone behind their property where it is?
Yes.
There'll be no, that's, that's all I've been asking this whole time, because it's easily.
At least they already established that.
They did not establish it, they asked, no, but they haven't established what's going to stay and what's going to move, because the only thing on here is a 10-foot wide landscaping easement, everything else is going to be cleaned. This is the first I've heard that this vegetation is going to remain there, so.
I believe they're going to be what they just said?
I said, I see a 10- I said, I see a 10, 10-foot wide landscaping easement here, and I was asking, I had previously asked why it's not wider and to meet the 25-foot requirements, because you want it to be conditional. I'm not asking for plantings, I've stated previously, I just wanna know that the screening's gonna be there, I just wanna know how wide it is and how long it is, you could clearly see there, they are proposing that 10-foot wide section for additional plantings, which I'm not even requesting, as long as it remains in its vegetative state, and there's more than enough room to put 25 feet there if they have no intention of clearing, clearing those trees in there, you can clearly see that 10-foot wide strip is more than sufficient, and I'm not asking for additional plantings, I don't think it's necessary, I think there's plenty of natural vegetation there, I just wanna know what's gonna remain. I want to know for the life of the project what we can expect to remain in place there, that's all. It's, it's nothing, I'm not asking for additional screening, I don't wanna put people there and, and jump in through hoops, but if they're gonna leave that there, then it shouldn't be an issue to make it so as part of the condition, and then I'm more than willing to move forward, if, but I think that's well more than the 25 feet I'm requesting, so.
The intent is not to clear in that area.
Correct, there's, there's no tree, there's no tree clearing on the project anywhere.
Right.
So, the existing vegetation is to remain, the 10-foot easement is there, so that we can have, that we have the right to plant there, should we be required to do so, to supplement the existing vegetation.
I think you should move to ask if there's anybody in the public.
I will, Kevin, thank you, Mr. Robinson, whereas this is a public hearing, if anyone is here on behalf of, in the public, if you'd like to come forward. See, none? Can we get a motion to?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Mr. Lake?
Says I.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Uh, Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye. That being said, any other concerns of the board?
As far as discussion goes, so where are we at, are we just gonna move to a vote, or are we gonna require that a certain amount of vegetative screening be left in place along that line?
Based on.
They've agreed to leave the vegetative screening.
So, it shouldn't be an issue?
And based on Mr. Glyne's report, I am willing to, to move forward.
If that's based on existing screening, so.
He saw the updated plans, correct, Mr. Planner? Yes.
Right, and is he expecting that, that those are gonna be there for the life of the project? So, there's no way to ask Mr. Glyne's questions?
Nor is it necessary.
Right.
Because it's written down, and there is screening, and there's screening all over the place.
Thank you, Mr. Bott, there is screening, I wanna make sure it stays there for the life of the property, that is our job, they could go in tomorrow and clear it all out for whatever reason they wanted.
They can't, they just, they said they can't.
They can't?
They can't, they said they can't.
They can't clear a 10-foot wide buffer strip, that's, that's where they're at.
So, your concern is that they're gonna clear everything up to the 10-foot?
I'm not concerned that they're gonna clear anything, I just wanna know what is gonna be there to provide screening for these residents for the life of the property? I wanna know exactly, is it just gonna be that 10-foot wide strip? Is it gonna be all the vegetative material that's there, which is?
It seems like the same question keeps getting.
Right, 'cause I'm not getting an answer to it, Mr. Sedillo.
I don't think you're understanding.
No, I think I'm understanding it.
No, I, I think.
The question is, what is going to remain? What is going to remain?
Enough is enough.
Enough is enough is not an appropriate response.
Stop, please, this is enough. I would appreciate it if we could just get a motion, I'm fine with this, Mr. Glynes is fine with it, he's the town engineers, engineer, and I think that we should move forward and propose a motion to approve.
All right, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewable energy development on.
Partners LLC.
Partners LLC, requesting a special permit and a site plan review pursuant to sections 290-2-2.3(c), Article 3-1, 290-4-3, 4A, and Article 5-3 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 696 Purchase Street, zero leeway, zero rear Fosdick Road in Carver, Mass., Assessors Map 57, Map 58, Lot 2-A, Lot 2-0, in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District, R.A. The proposed project includes a dual-use ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system on existing agricultural cranberry bogs as part of an agricultural solar tariff generation unit, ASTGU.
I'll second that.
Mr. Lake?
Aye.
I don't believe that we've established the necessary criteria for screening and what's gonna stay and what's not gonna stay, otherwise, I would, all they, all anybody has to say is this is where the screening's gonna be, it'll be there for the life of the project.
But, Mr. Shea, we just had a motion to approve.
Yes, and it is open for discussion, I'm allowed to explain.
Yeah, but you've explained it, and explained it, and explained it.
Well, I'm explaining my decision now.
Well, just a, yea or nay?
And we can take it to a vote.
No, I'm going to give my reasons for what I'm doing and why I'm doing it. If we could have established an appropriate lifetime screening of some sort for the project, I wouldn't have had a problem approving it, I don't think that we are adequately protecting the interests of the abutters, so in this particular instance, and unfortunately, I hate to say it, but I'm voting nay.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Lake?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea said nay.
Mary Lynn Williams says.
I apologize, 'cause I thought Mr. Lake had already made his, of his vote.
He did, I just didn't know if you heard that or not.
Okay.
All right, and as discussed previously, I'll have the draft decision, which will include that condition about the, and ensure that the optional screening is, is necessary, as shown on the plans, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to other business, next on the agenda is a request for extension for special permit, Bridgestone Development, Inc., Lot Number 3, Ricketts Pond Business Park, Assesses Map 32, Lot 1-3, in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. Mr. Planner, I'm going to accuse myself because of my relationship with the applicant, and I will turn this over to Madam Vice Chair.
Very well.
Mr. Bott, may I have a vote on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second that motion.
Ellen Sedillo.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a second it.
Yes, and if I may, just for the record, note that while the applicant is here requesting an extension, the Massachusetts Saves Act extended all permits by two years, so while most folks who've done this before, and this is, I think, the third permit act out of the legislature, most folks come in and ask for an extension anyhow, even though the state has extended all those, so they're automatically extended, but general business practice, most applicants will come in and ask for an extension as they see that deadline looming in the future.
Any further discussion?
Yes, why are you requesting an extension?
The.
Here, tell them who you are.
Eric Schumaker, Mackenzie Engineering Group, the special permit was granted in July of 2023, those typically have a two-year before the expiration date, so we're trying to be proactive and, and get ahead of it.
I mean, is the project unfinished, is there things that need to be done, I mean?
Yeah, the, the project has, has not begun construction yet.
Okay, yeah.
All right, with that, you've got a motion from Mr. Robinson and a second from Connie to extend, so you just need a vote.
I'll start with discussion. Lake says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Next on other business is the appointment to the CPC, Mr. Planner?
So, the Community Preservation Committee has people from various boards and committees that sit on it, I think Connie, you're our last CPC?
No, I sit, I sit on it for the Historic District Commission.
Okay, so, the applicant, the board needs to appoint someone to sit on the Community Preservation Committee.
Very good.
So Connie can tell you more about how the oper, they operate, but it's typically, I don't wanna say seasonal work, but it's kinda quiet for a long time, and then projects come in, and you start looking at them and vetting them, and, and voting on them, and those projects might involve historic preservation, affordable housing, open space and recreation, the three components of the Community Preservation Act.
Very good.
On, on top of that, we just basically follow up on everything that's been approved, they're not grants, what the town approves is what gets done, any further monies go back to the CPC, but part of our charge is to ensure that the projects are done and, and completed, and yes, summers tend to be a little slower than the other parts of the year, but it's, it's, it's basically just the follow-up.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna say that we, we, I was the recipient of a Community Preservation Committee application for Eleven Green Street, we got the project done, couple grand under budget, which is very nice when those things happen, so we'll be sending a couple grand back to the Community Preservation Committee.
Very good.
Eleven Green Street, and we hope to have a closing for Habitat for Humanity in the very near future, after all we've been through to clean up the site on that.
Nice, very good.
So, that's just a sidebar for, some, just throw some love at the CPC, I appreciate what they did.
Very good, thank you. Is anyone interested on the board?
Wish I had time.
And what do we do if we don't have a volunteer, Mr. Planner?
Then I will let the folks know that we don't have an appointee to the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay, very good.
We, we may get a reply back to ask again at some point in the future, but that's what, that's what we're saying.
I might be interested in the future, Mr. Planner, it's just based on what's, the family matters that I have going on right now, my time is somewhat limited. And then next, we have for other business, the reorganization letter to the Registry of Deeds, which I'm sure you have for us to execute.
I, I do, so every year with the reorganization of the board, we sign this letter and send it to the Registry of Deeds, 'cause when we send in a plan with our signatures on it.
They need to attest.
In theory, there is someone who looks at this letter and goes.
They do.
Is that really Curtis Lake, or is that Lake Curtis? So, with that, I just wanna, the form is here, if we can have folks sign, this is typically for subdivision plans and special permits, so there's not a signature block for the applicant, I mean, for our associate member, for whatever reason, but I'll fix that in a few, so if we get everybody to sign, we'll find.
Well, since the, since the original model rule, I think it's very unlikely I'll be called upon to vote for anything, so.
Well, you always wanna be ready when it's your time, don't you?
You also serve only steadily weight, I guess, right?
So, that is this letter, so folks could sign that, pass it down, I'll pick it up, and we'll send it on to the registry.
Very good. And do we have any planning board member notes for this evening?
I'm all set this time.
All set? You're all set? All right, and Mr. Planner?
Yes, so I have two notes, one, the question was asked about the eligibility of the conservation, former Conservation Commission member vote on the planning board, I believe you all found in your packets today, the opinion from Town Council, it says, assuming that Mr. Lake does not have a personal financial interest in the matter, it's my opinion that he may participate and vote as a member of the planning board on matters that he participated in as a member of the Conservation Commission. The conflict of interest law primarily addresses situations in which a public employee has divided loyalties, has divided loyalties between himself or another and the town. In the matter you described, Mr. Lake is/was acting as behalf of the town, both as a member of the planning board and as a member of the Conservation Commission, therefore it is my opinion that Mr. Lake may participate in a matter as a member of the planning board, even if he participated in the same matter as a member of the Conservation Commission. Town Council goes on to say, that being said, when acting as a member of the planning board, Mr. Lake must make decisions based on the facts and circumstances presented, and must apply the appropriate legal standards for ruling on applications for special permits. It is understandable that someone may think this participation in a matter as a member of the Conservation Commission will improperly influence his, in decision-making as a member of the planning board, in such case, Mr. Lake can dispel any appearance of conflict by filing the opposed closure with the town clerk. Additionally, Mr. Lake may wish to make a statement on the record at the commencement proceedings. If you have any questions, Town Council will be happy to do so, there is a, a, a form Town Council provided as well for disclosures like that, we have available for any member of the planning board, if they feel the necessity for it.
Would that be said, Mr. Lake could have voted at the last meeting?
Yeah, he did, because Town Council had already said.
Right.
That's fine for him to participate.
Okay.
The only other note that I have is on the screen, Carver Farmer Market, met with the Agricultural Committee previously, and they wanted to make sure that we got him as much love as possible, so June 8, that's just around the corner, through October 26, Carver Farmer's Market, right across the street, Sundays from.
Usually in the afternoons, I think.
Yeah, would have been great information to have, but time, but June 8.
Very good, thank you.
Was the disclosure form filed?
I believe what Town Council said, if Mr. Lake felt one, it was necessary.
Well, it.
If Mr. Lake felt one was necessary, conflicts of interest are the responsibility of the voting member, no one else can tell someone they have a conflict.
I'm not telling anybody anything, Mr. Bott.
Perfect, thank you.
We have certain concerns involving bylaws and public discussions on matters, and it's clear that a disclosure statement should have been filed, stating that it had been discussed publicly and voted on prior to this.
That would be the exact opposite of what I just said.
Right.
When I said, it is the applicant, it is the member's responsibility to declare any conflict, not.
I got, I got it.
Not another member.
We can repeat each other back and forth.
Yeah, you've done, you've done plenty, so anyhow, that's, that's all I had to say.
All right, I'd like to say something, I think it's beautiful that the veterans' pictures are now on different posts in town, unfortunately, I didn't get my husband's in, in time for this year, but I will be having that done, he is a Vietnam vet, 67, 68, and he saw a great deal of action, so I think those are beautiful.
It is, it's wonderful.
And very respectful.
Yeah, I know, we've had a lot of work from both the Community Preservation Committee, and I think the veterans' groups to put that together.
Correct, yes, yeah, very good. Okay, and then we have some minutes to go over?
We've got March 25th and April 8th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March 25th.
I'll second that motion.
And I'll make a motion to accept.
Well, we gotta vote that, so we got a motion and a second on the 25th.
Okay.
KRN, who had made the second?
What's that?
The minutes for the 20, Connie, thank you, move second, so that's a move and a second for the March 25th minutes, and we need a vote on that to accept.
Okay, and I'll make.
Mr. Lake, I have to abstain, I was not here for that, so.
All right.
Oh, that is correct.
Okay, Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye.
And on that alphabetical, so you're gonna have to pick up your game, ma'am. And on that alphabetical, so you're going to have to pick up your game, man. Because you're, it seemed like L. This is the first time you've been first in alphabetical order?
Yeah.
Okay, congratulations.
Halfway through the alphabet, no?
I know. We were just all positive, like, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So that was 4-0-1 for 25th. All right, thank you.
Good.
April 8?
April 8.
I would like to make the motion to accept the minutes of 4-8-25.
And I'll second that.
Okay. I do want it here, correct?
Again, Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye.
4-0-1. Right. And our next meeting is June 10th.
And that would be it? Very good. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that certain motion.
Okay, well, okay.
Very good.
Curtis Lake says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye. Good evening. Good night.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Good night.
All right, thank you all.